Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the Monday, May 3rd Board of Commissioners meeting. We had a work session at 4:00 PM. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order, and the first item is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. We have no one signed up. Anyone in the audience wish to lead us in that? If not, I'll ask if a board member, if Commissioner, please, your... Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Heavenly Father. We thank you for this glorious day. What a glorious weather that you sent us to remind us that despite all of the rain that we have, the sun still comes out and shines. Father, just like springtime, Lord, we are on the precipice of a new season of gas coming to our outer banks. Father, I pray that even now preparations would be made, Father, that people will be safe in their travels to and from, and, Father, that others prepare that they too will be protected. But I pray that you grant this war wisdom this evening as we look at it too and vote on the issues before us that affect our residents and our guests and our listeners. Lord, bless this evening, bless each and every one of the commissioners here. Lord, bless Kitty and her absence. And, Lord, I ask that you, your hands would be upon us this evening, Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Beaumont. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any needed changes to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to suggest a few changes this evening. First, I'd like to remove the administrative reports, and under old business, we're not going to hear that tonight, and I'd like to move that item to our 517 Commissioner meeting for possible adoption at that time.
Okay. Any other changes? Hearing none. Have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion of the second made for discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is public comment. I have no one signed up for public comment, so if anybody wishes to speak, it's in the audience. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment, and I'm going to get into the Commissioner's report. And tonight, I'll start off to my right with Commissioner Etheridge.
I have nothing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Etheridge. Commissioner McCord.
The only thing, like you said, and I know Commissioner Payment frequently says this, your local fire departments... I assisted, we had a fire on Bells Island Road a couple days ago. I'm going to leave the victim names out of it, but our fire department, I was there on scene in the capacity of the Sheriff's Office assisting. Those guys, man, they worked really hard. I watched them go through like 48 waters in about 15 minutes. It was crazy because it was a very hot day, and it was a very windy day, which also didn't help and made it tough for them. But support your local fire department guys. I mean, I give them a hard time as anybody, but they do do a good job in the county, the volunteer fire departments, as well as our paid. And just, you know, keep those guys in your prayers. Excuse me. We did have one injury at the last one, and like you said, you know, I mean, things can happen. So like I said, just keep supporting those guys. They do a good job, as well as all your first responders. All right?
Thank you, Commissioner McCord. Vice Chairman Beaumont.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll just reiterate regarding fire departments, then yes, they put their lives on the line. We've had a lot of structure fires, and the PPE and the training they go through saves lives. And I believe, you know, here recently, we've had a lot of, with the training and the proper PPE, I think we've had some injuries that could have taken a turn for the worse had not we've had the proper volunteer fire departments out there. So they're doing a great job. Just lift them up, keep getting volunteered when you can with the departments, call them, anything you can do to just keep them lifted up, especially in this busy season with the heat now. They're going to be outside with these wrecks and the summer heat. It's going to be terrible out there, and we may have some more feedback on this, but be careful on these roads. It's dangerous out there. Traffic's coming through now, vacationers. When we're going onto the highway or exiting, it's a challenge out there. Just please be careful and just respect the laws out there while we battle through the busy season coming up. That's all I have. Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just got to comment briefly on the noise ordinance. We are going to move that to our next meeting for those of you who may be watching tonight. We had, as the chairman said, at 4:00 today, we had a work session regarding that. We've gotten a lot of emails. Overwhelmingly, the number of emails have been about the change to the decibel level. And that is not actually what has transpired in this change. And so when we go into this in our next meeting, that will be the 17th of May. Please stand up for that. We'll go into detail about what is proposed to be changed, but the decibel level's been set for many, many years, and that is not what's at stake here. It is about the number of permits to be issued out. And so like I said, we'll go into greater detail on that in our upcoming meeting. On this weekend, the Sheriff's Department changed where people park on the beach a little bit. For those who've been around long enough, we used to be able to not park for the first half mile on the beach. That is a state area. And then the Federal Park Service or Wildlife Management, their portion of the beach, the next mile up, didn't allow parking out there. So we moved the parking area up with agreement with them to, just to help them out and to help the vacationers out from having a problem to where it has been for probably more than a decade now, up at mile post 14 and 1/2. In consulting with the Sheriff's Department, we learned that we actually, the ordinance states the first half mile. And so they actually set signs out and changed the signs that were kind of contrary to what we've been used to over the last decade or better. So at our next meeting, we will hopefully adopt an ordinance to change that or formalize where it lands at the 14 and 1/2 mile marker like we have had. So that will be the first mile and a half open to traffic flow, which for the locals that have been up there know that that area gets really deep and pretty treacherous, so it's much better having the parking moved further up the beach. So that is it for me this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner White and Commissioner Jarvis.
Tonight in the concern agenda, we will proclaim May 2021 to be Older Americans Month. In passing this resolution, we urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential contributors to the strength of our community. One way our citizens can actively support our older citizens is by volunteering with our home-delivered meals program, which is in need of help. There are currently 10 home-delivered meal routes in Currituck County that serve approximately 65 homebound seniors. Home-delivered meals volunteers are the foundation of the program and an invaluable asset to the community. Volunteers play a key role in providing seniors not only with a meal, but much-needed socialization and smiles. For some clients, the volunteers are the only person they see that day. Volunteer schedules are flexible to meet the needs of the volunteers. The average route requires not much more than an hour of your time, and you can volunteer as often or as little as you like, including becoming a substitute volunteer. With reduction in volunteers due to the COVID pandemic, we need volunteers now more than ever. So if you're interested, and I always say it is the best thing I do all month, please call the Currituck Center at (252) 232-3505 if you're interested in becoming a volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. Next is our county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have just a couple of things this evening. The first being, wanted to make the board aware, but also the general public aware, there will be a document coming in the next couple of meetings before the Board of Commissioners to formalize an agreement with the Wildlife Resources Commission. That document will lay out a transition process whereby the county will take over the funding of the Wildlife Resources Education Center that exists in historic Corolla Park. And over the next two years, that building and its contents will transition into county property. That's a pretty big deal. The Wildlife Resources Commission actually approached us about moving forward with that. Their mission for the building, which was to try to promote hunting and fishing licenses because of the number of folks that visit there who are from out of state, was not being achieved. So they've got to take their resources and use them towards other things that achieve that mission more clearly. For us, it's a wonderful addition to the campus that we've got out there, but I don't foresee the programming or the direction of that facility changing much at all, even once it's under county operations. So we'll be meeting with the staff out there sometime in May to talk through that transition. You all will see a document, as I stated, sometime in the next couple of meetings to formalize that agreement. Really excited about that, and I think it's going to really complement our Maritime Museum and Historic Wellhead to really cap off that property out there. The other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is that as we continue to open back up, as we head into May, the senior center is changing their programming a little more. They're going to remove the by appointment only, so now folks will be able to come in and go as they please. They're also going to start in-house nutrition again. That'll resume on May 10th, and it will occur on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And the ICPTA will resume for those clients who wish to attend the Pales Point or Barco locations. And also, Barco, Pales Point, and Knott's Island will operate program under normal hours, and that's to help facilitate the on-site nutrition. That's all I have to say this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I do have one question. Could you give a status update? I know on the, I got some phone calls about the Shawboro bill.
Yeah, so the Shawboro Convenience Center work was begun last week on it. As they uncovered the pipe, they realized there was more work than was needed. The hope is that it will be completed by tomorrow afternoon, but there's no, I don't want to give a firm deadline on that. That's what we're looking at right now. So that project, we did everything we could to try to move it quickly and as cost-effectively, but because it was an emergency project, it is a costly project, but one that we hope will be done here in the next couple of days. So that's the best that I have for you right now. We hoped it would be open by Saturday, but they had an issue where the pipe that they were uncovering actually had another pipe that ran into it perpendicularly, so they had to cap that pipe and also fiber optic line had to be very carefully handled since it's a critical hub through that area for the residents up and down that road.
Also, they will not pave immediately over where the pipe's being installed.
That's correct. It'll be a gravel entry at first. That's to allow the material time to pack down as people drive over it. They'll then come in and pave it at a later time, but that should take, I mean, it won't take more than a day at the most.
When I left Shawboro this afternoon, they were dumping sand in there on top of the pipes.
It's a good sign. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Pull up, Dave.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Teklo. And the next is our county attorney's report.
Good evening. Last Thursday and Friday, I participated in a Zoom meeting hosted by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, in which was presented and discussed a settlement agreement in the opioid litigation between the North Carolina Department of Justice and the counties and cities in North Carolina that have filed suit against the opioid manufacturers and distributors. In June of 2018, this board adopted a resolution in which you found that the opioid abuse, addiction, morbidity, and mortality is a public health, safety, and welfare concern in Currituck County, and the board authorized this county retaining National Counsel McHugh Fuller to represent Currituck County in the litigation and to file suit against the opioid manufacturers and distributors. You may have seen in the press that there has been ongoing work proceeding with that national litigation. Some 3,000 lawsuits have been filed against these companies responsible for the opioid epidemic, which has killed in North Carolina alone 16,000 people. The cases are all consolidated in the federal district court of the middle district of Ohio, and so all the lawyers have been working with a federal judge to attempt to reach some type of settlement, preferably, or moving on to trial ultimately. In anticipation of a settlement, the North Carolina Department of Justice and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners felt like it was important for North Carolina counties, cities, and the state to come to some kind of agreement on how an anticipated settlement distribution in North Carolina would be utilized. A number of states are setting up use of their potential opioid settlement money to be state-centric, where the state would create some type of bureaucracy or department and would retain most, if not all, of the funds, looking to the cities and counties who've been impacted the most at the local level, to have to come and seek grants, for example, in order to put together some type of education, training, or other services to address the opioid epidemic and what it has done in ratting their communities. So in North Carolina, there was the creation of what's called the 555 Committee from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners side, five county managers, five county attorneys, and five county commissioner board chairs formed the county side, and then there's some representatives from the North Carolina Department of Justice who have hammered out an agreement, which I provided to you in your, in manila folders in front of you. There is a overview of the opioid settlement agreement itself. There's a frequently asked questions document in that envelope about the agreement between the state and the counties, and there's a 24-page agreement that I encourage you to please begin to review because we are being asked, along with all the 100 counties and cities with a population of more than 30,000, to adopt this settlement agreement and put North Carolina on record as willing to settle this litigation and for a distribution of some 80% of any settlement that North Carolina receives going to the localities and not to the state. What does that mean in dollars? As they reported, while negotiations for a national settlement continue, there's anticipation that it could well mean $26 billion in settlement would be distributed over a period of 18 years to states based on population and local impact. That's at the state level. And so North Carolina could receive of that $850 million coming into North Carolina from that anticipated settlement of that amount. Under this settlement agreement, which I'm presenting to you tonight and asking you to start considering, 15% would be retained by the state of North Carolina, 80% however go to local government. So if you do the math, $680 million would be distributed among the counties and cities in North Carolina with an additional potential of a 5% incentive on top of that if all the counties and all the cities, it doesn't apply to us, all the cities within the county with greater than 30,000 population, sign this memorandum of agreement with the state. All told, Currituck County could receive $1,349,474. There is a factor that you'll see attached as an exhibit to the proposed agreement of all the counties. They informed us, the national health experts, determined what each county or city's proportion it shares should be. Not in North Carolina will it be based on population, but it would be based upon the number of deaths within a county or city from opioids, and also the number of prescription opioid prescriptions written in a given county or city. And so you'll see some decimal points that go way on out to the nth degree, but nevertheless, Currituck County, if there's a $26 billion settlement, could anticipate receiving $1.3 million. Now, there would be a limitation, of course, on how that money can be spent. And so because the state and everybody else wants to see that the impact of the money will address the concern, the need, and the damage done by the opioid use and abuse, it will be limited to education, training, treatment, things of that nature. And you'll see in the agreement that there's two different options. There's an option A with a list of things that a county might do to utilize this monies, or option B with more things that a county might do with this money as it is received. It also includes the ability of counties and cities to come together in a region and to collaboratively do something, whether it might be drug treatment court, whether it might be helping pay for the rehabilitation of someone who's addicted to opioids, or to provide them some further assistance as they leave rehab and are being acclimated back into the community, whether that might be for some housing or other job assistance. So there's all kinds, there's so many things that can probably be done, there can be a lot of creativity to it as well. So it's been very positive. There's going to be continued follow-up, weekly Zoom meetings, I guess really probably to see how the counties are going with their approval process and egging counties on to sign on to this agreement. I feel very good about it and would certainly recommend it to you, but I look forward to you all taking the time to read through it, to ask me any questions that you might have. And I would hope that within the next couple of meetings, we would be in a position where you would feel comfortable enough to adopt a resolution and to sign this agreement and get Currituck County on the record as being supportive and prepared upon receipt of any settlement monies that might come this way. Second, and lastly, I did present to you last time I gave my report about the process for approving contracts that we go through. The clerk rightly chastised me the next day because I left her out of the chain of events that occurs when the contracts are reviewed, and indeed, the clerk has an important part of the process in that she must attest to most every contract and put the county's seal upon it. So I'm sorry that I left our good clerk out of the equation, but she is a very important aspect of it. And from a data perspective, since January, we have prepared, reviewed, and/or processed 141 contracts of varying degrees and kinds, and they continue at this time of year to really flood our offices up here as all the departments are trying at the last minute to make sure they have all their services ready to go toward the end of the fiscal year and the coming of the new one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. Okay. The next item is new business, which is new business A, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners opposing NC Senate Bill 455 to decriminalize non-statutory criminal offenses and violations. I guess, Mr. Teklo?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can take this one. This follows with the next one. Both of these two resolutions, you're going to see this one and the next one, both deal with the fact that, once again, the General Assembly is attempting to take local authority out of the hands of the government that's closest to the people. It just does away with tools that are in our toolbox. While Currituck County, in fact, does not charge criminally for a lot of ordinance violations, nowhere near what it could, it's the fact that it is a tool that's being removed from the possible use by the General Assembly. And so we've seen this over the last decade or more in local government, so I would urge the board to adopt this resolution and the next resolution, which speaks out against a bill that essentially takes land use authority away from counties as it relates to what they call middle housing, townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes. Be happy to answer questions about either one.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion of the second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. The resolution passes?
Was that both?
No.
No, no, just A, as I was just going for A. I didn't address B yet. Now, B, I'm going to go into, I'm going to read it, and we're going to B. That motion was just for the, what I read, for A.
For A.
Okay. The next item is item B, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners opposing NC Senate Bill 349, House Bill 401, increase housing opportunities.
Mr. Chairman, along the same lines, it's a bill that takes away local authority. This is the one I alluded to earlier, that basically requires the Board of County Commissioners to allow duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes anywhere single-family dwelling would be allowed, as long as a host of other things that really just gut the authority that you all have as commissioners to represent the citizens here in Currituck County. Be happy to answer any questions.
Motion for approval.
I'll second.
Motion on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Resolution passes. The next item under new business C, consideration for approval of engineering design proposal for Moyac wastewater treatment plant. I believe our county manager has this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is basically, gives us the ability to move forward with the design contract for the replacement of the Moyac wastewater treatment plant. Hazen and Sawyer is the recommended contractor for this, so what I'm seeking is your approval of the proposal, as well as giving me the authority to sign any contract to give them notice to proceed. The cost for the design work is $998,000. They are actually designing a 200,000-gallon plant. We're going to bid out 100,000 gallons, and then the other 100,000 will be a bid alternate. And if we have the funds to do both, we intend to do both. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the board? This board for motion?
May do approve.
Second.
Motion on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. The last item under new business, well, not the last, but the next item D, consideration for approval of design proposal for Moyac Elementary School renovation and addition. County manager has this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is the approval of a design-build proposal for Moyac Elementary School renovation and addition. This proposal comes to us from the team of Boomerang Design and Sussex Construction. The proposal is for a design of a school that will add about, it'll add 11 classrooms, so about 150 students to Moyac Elementary School, increase that capacity. It also renovates their dining area, takes the school and creates one whole structure so that the students move about the school, they're all within the confines of the school instead of having to go outside. And it also renovates the kindergarten area, which is an open concept that was very popular when that section was built, but has since fallen out of favor with kindergarten teachers, I believe. The total project estimate right now is $14,259,800. We are going to pay cash for this project. We've talked about this project for about seven months now. Obviously, in the seven months since we've begun talking about it, the construction costs have gone up. I will say that within that cost is what they call escalation to bid, so they are basically banking that from what it costs a day until they bid the project, that there will be a 15% increase in construction materials. That might not occur if it doesn't, it's savings that comes back to the county, but so they're just trying to be careful. The design portion is $998,500. And then the FFNE part, that's fixtures, furniture, and equipment, is $1,173,300, just to give you an idea of how that breaks down. So the actual construction cost is $11,733,000. So it's higher than what we anticipated from the estimates that were done in the study 10 years ago, but as we all know, this, you know, it's a 10-year-old study, and a lot's changed even in the last 10 months with construction costs.
There was something in there where they had concerns about the basement, some of the structure down there. Did I read that in this report?
With Moyac Elementary School?
Uh-huh. It was outside of the normal scope of the project that they had concerns, I guess, upon inspecting the place?
They've got, they've got...
Due to the age of the building?
Yeah, they've got, inside of that contract, there are services outside of what's contracted that if they find something, that they'll give us a report and will have to address. Until they get started, which we haven't given them notice to proceed yet, they don't know what exactly that'll be, but, you know, anywhere that they find things, we'll have to evaluate those, whether they fit within the scope of the project. If they don't, then the school system will have to kind of look at that under their capital expenses. If they do fit within the scope of the project, we'll have to take a look at the scope and see where we can find savings in order to make it fit under the budget where possible.
They mentioned in the concerns water infiltration and moisture in the walls and basement.
Yes. So I think that was an issue that was pointed out even back in the study that was done.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't know that they've gotten in and gotten a full, in-depth look at that, so...
Mr. Chairman, I will move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion of the second. Do we have any further discussions? Hearing none? All in favor? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. And the next item is Item E, consent agenda.
May for approval.
Second.
Motion on the second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, and that concludes, I'll adjourn our May 3 Board of Commissioners meeting. Thank you, everyone.